We're all here. Let's get ready to go. We are going to start our meeting with a call to order and a flag salute.
Devin, if you could please display the flag.
Thank you.
I was like, it's fighting me. Give me a second.
Together. Everybody feels unmuted.
There you go. Should be there.
All right. Thank you. All right, everyone. We'll just do it together. I pledge allegiance of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Devin. All right, everyone. Thank you. Our first item on our agenda when we are, let me call this meeting into order, is we have our proclamations and we have a couple of recognitions and proclamations today. And I will start with our very first one, which is our Teacher Appreciation Week. And I will read it as follows. The Hillsborough School District celebrates teachers who keep American democracy alive by molding future community members through guidance and education. The Hillsborough School District honors teachers who are constantly learning so they can adapt to the ever-changing needs of a diverse population in order to open students' minds to ideas, knowledge, and dreams that reach beyond the limits of their present circumstances. The Hillsborough School District thanks teachers who contribute to the growth of our city, state, and nation by providing high-quality equitable education to all students. The Hillsborough School District recognizes that teachers spend countless hours preparing lessons, educating progress, evaluating progress, counseling and coaching students, and performing community service. The Hillsborough School District salutes teachers and their work to inspire students to discover endless possibilities for success. The Board of Education of the Hillsborough School District do hereby proclaim the week of May 4th through the 8th, 2020, to be Teacher Appreciation Week. We urge all community members to join us in recognizing the many contributions and achievements of teachers to the development of prosperity of our community. Thank you, teachers. Our next item on, our next item is National School Nurses Week, and we will have Jackie Sprouse present that.
The Hillsborough School District acknowledges that school nurses act as a liaison to the community, school community, families, and healthcare providers on behalf of children's health by promoting wellness and improving health outcomes for our nation's children. The Hillsborough School District knows that students today face more complex and life-threatening health problems requiring care in schools and appreciates the role that school nurses play in the lives of students. The Hillsborough School District recognizes that school nurses have served a critical role in improving public health and ensuring students' academic success for more than 100 years. The Hillsborough School District understands that school nurses are the link between health and learning and are in a position to make a positive difference for children every day. The Hillsborough School District celebrates the accomplishments of school nurses and their efforts of meeting the needs of today's students by improving the delivery of healthcare in our schools. The Hillsborough School District offers gratitude for school nurses who contribute to our local communities by helping students stay healthy, in school, and ready to learn. The Board of Education of the Hillsborough School District do hereby proclaim the week of May 6th through 12th, 2020, to be School Nurses Appreciation Week. We urge all community members to join us in recognizing the many contributions and achievements of school nurses to the development and prosperity of our community. Thank you.
Erica, you're muted.
Thank you. I thought I clicked it. Our next proclamation is our Asian Pacific American Heritage Month, and our presenter is Sheen Kim.
The Hillsborough School District acknowledges that Asian Pacific Americans have lived and worked in Oregon for more than 200 years, contributing to the state's rich history, economy, and culture. The Hillsborough School District knows that Asian Pacific Americans have helped advance our community's prosperity through their contributions to all fields of education, business, the arts, economic development, science, and technology. The Hillsborough School District recognizes that Asian Pacific American history is marked by a struggle for freedom, equality, and justice, prevailing over the adversity of exclusion, persecution, incarceration, and disparities. The Hillsborough School District understands that the vibrant history and diverse cultures of Oregon's Asian Pacific Americans are here to be honored as a central part of our state's history, of our state's story, and shared across all Oregon communities. The Hillsborough School District celebrates that the month of May is nationally recognized as a time to celebrate contributions of Asian Pacific Americans to our society and collective history. The Board of Education of the Hillsborough School District do hereby proclaim the month of May, 2020, to be Asian Pacific American Heritage Month. We urge all community members to join us in recognizing the many contributions and achievements of Asian Pacific Americans to the development and prosperity of our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheen. Our next proclamation is our Mental Health Awareness Month with your dear Martinez.
The Hillsborough School District acknowledges that mental health is essential to everyone's overall health and well-being. The Hillsborough School District knows that all Americans face challenges in life that can impact their mental health. The Hillsborough School District recognizes that prevention is an effective way to reduce the burden of mental health conditions. The Hillsborough School District understands there are practical tools that all people can use to improve their mental health and increase resiliency. The Hillsborough School District recognizes that each business, school, government agency, healthcare provider, organization, and community member shares the burden of mental health problems and has a responsibility to promote mental wellness and support prevention efforts. The Board of Education of the Hillsborough School District do hereby proclaim the month of May, 2020, to be Mental Health Awareness Month. We urge all community members to join us in recognizing Mental Health Awareness Month.
Thank you, Adira. I know at this time, mental health is very, very important for many of us. Our next item that we have is our approval of our agenda. If I can hear motion.
I move that the Board of Directors approve the agenda as printed.
Second.
It has been moved by Mark and seconded by Adira. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signal by voting in the chat yes or A. Okay. Yes votes are Lisa Allen, Sheen Kim, Jackie Sprouse, Mark Watson, Adira Martinez, Martin Granham, and myself. The motion carries. Our next item is audience time. Do we have any?
We don't have any at this time.
Okay. Our next item on the agenda is our consent agenda, and I will also look for a motion. I move that the Board of Directors approve the items on the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, I think I heard Mark first. So it has been moved by Jackie and seconded by Mark. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor, please signal by voting yes or A on the chat. Okay. All our yes votes are Martin Granham, Lisa Allen, Sheen Kim, Jackie Sprouse, Mark Watson, Adira Martinez, and myself. The motion carries.
Erica, can I make a comment here?
Yes.
So a year and a half ago, the board, maybe longer, set out to update all the policies, and this represents the last group of policies to go through to get current. So that is a, that is a big deal because there's, as you know, hundreds of policies to go through. So at this point, what happens is on a quarterly basis, we get updates from OSBA, and then we will bring those to you, broken down, just in monthly allotments. We'll just start back through, and all of those that have changed since we started this process, we now start back through, and it's a much more manageable process. So your commitment to getting through these and holding us accountable to getting through them, I think was, was well-placed enthusiasm because it's good to have these up to date. So I just didn't want to let that moment go by without letting you know that.
Thank you, Mike. We have a question from Jackie.
Actually, we have a shout out to Val previously, Rose now, the entire staff and cabinet who, I know this put a lot on your plate too. So thank you so much. Oh my gosh, that is such a great feeling.
Thank you all. We will move on to our next item on the agenda, which is our action items. Section F. And our first one that we have is to declare surplus equipment and authorize recycling of technology with Michelle Morrison. And just for a reference, let me see if anybody already has a page on there. I can kind of.
192.
There you go. Thank you.
Thank you, directors. I am presenting the surplus because that typically runs through the business office as we manage the asset inventory. But on this particular program through Green Century Electronics Recycling, I know that if you have any program-specific questions about where this computer equipment goes or what happens next, Jordan Beveridge would be the one to respond to those questions, but I'm happy to answer anything I can about declaring surplus property and what that means.
Thank you. We have a question from Andrew. For him to speak.
Yeah, so it says here that we're recycling 84 Chromebooks, and I know with ongoing pandemic, we're looking towards distributing Chromebooks. So I was curious as to why we're recycling Chromebooks when, especially at this time, we're looking to distribute Chromebooks to students.
We actually have more than enough Chromebooks to distribute out to students without being involved. These are all ones that are either have expired past their support lifecycle with Google or are beyond repair.
Sounds good.
Thank you. If there are no further questions, I am looking for a motion, which is available on page 193 of our packet. I move that the Board of Directors declare the obsolete technology identified above as surplus and authorize recycling of this technology through Green Century Electronics Recycling.
One second.
Okay, has been moved by Jackie and seconded by Adira. Is there any discussion? Okay, see no discussion. If you will vote by typing in the chat yes or I. Now we'll read off the votes. Okay, voting yes is Martin Granham, Mark Watson, Sheen Kim, Lisa Allen, Jackie Sprouse, Adira Martinez, and myself. The motion carries. Our next item is accepting, accept gifts and donations with Michelle again.
Thank you. In the March, in the month of March, we received two donations over $5,000 in value, one from Kroger to the district to be used just in general education. We have a district-level donation account that that will go into to support different initiatives as they come up. And then we have a donation of $7,733 from Lat Akers PTE to Lat Akers Elementary School to be used for Chromebooks and a Chromebook card and sound system and miscellaneous equipment. So just a chance to publicly thank these folks for their support of our schools. So I'd ask for a motion.
I move that the Board of Directors accept the donation of $5,508.30 from Kroger to the Hillsborough School District to be used for general education and for the $7,733.60 from Lat Akers Elementary School.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Sheen and seconded by Mark. Is there any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please signal by voting I or yes in the chat. Okay, all our yes votes are Martin Granham, Sheen Kim, Adira Martinez, Mark Watson, Jackie Sprouse, Lisa Allen, and myself. The motion carries.
Thank you.
Our next item is our Budget Committee Appointment with Michelle again.
So thank you. As you know, in the work session, we went through the process of selecting committee appointee from two applications that came in. The tally was three votes for Christine and four votes for Monica Uribe, which makes her the eligible appointee for the committee. So I would look for a motion for Monica Uribe to be appointed to Position 6 on the Budget Committee.
I move that the Board of Directors appoint Monica Uribe to the Hillsborough School District Budget Committee, Position 6, expiring June 30th, 2022.
Second.
Okay, so it has been moved by Mark and seconded by Adira. Is there any discussion? I just want to acknowledge our applicants and just the fact that we have still interest in committees, and even at this time, it's really exciting to still have people volunteering their time, even under these circumstances. So we're very grateful to receive community participation in all of our committees. Okay, so with that, please, if you would vote by signaling I or yes in the chat, now we'll read off the votes. Okay, our yes votes are Martin Granham, Sheen Kim, Adira Martinez, Jackie Sprouse, Lisa Allen, Mark Watson, and myself. The motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Our next item on our agenda is to approve contract for Butternut Creek Elementary School Domestic Water Pipe System Replacement with Adam Stewart.
Well, you have Adam's assistant Casey tonight talking me through this. So as part of the 2017 Bond Project, the domestic water pipe at Butternut Creek was on the list to be replaced. On March 24th, we went out invitation to bid for contractors, and we had three approved contractors to perform the work. All were very close bids, and from that, we are presenting you five-star builders in the bid amount of $274,260 for this work. I'm happy to answer any questions that I can. Yeah, Mark?
Yeah, when we discussed this, I guess remotely last time, we sort of were curious to see how new projects might be impacted by the fact that we're still one of the few entities hiring people and doing projects. So is this about what we expected, less than what we expected, more than we expected because of cash tax? Like, where does this fall in the range of our expectations?
This is actually, we got really good pricing. So we were just right at, just under what our projected budget was for this. So we feel really good about the cost that came in. So I would say that we're on the plus side. It's not one of those projects that we got a lot of prices over our budget. So we feel really good about this process.
Thank you, Casey. So with that, we are looking for a motion.
I can do it. Jackie taught me a trick for my mic. I bet the Board of Directors award the contract for Butternut Creek Elementary School Domestic Water Pipe Replacement Project to five-star builders in the amount of $274,260.
Second.
Okay, so it has been moved by Lisa and seconded by Jackie. Is there any discussion? There's no further discussion. Please signal by saying I or typing I or yes in the chat. Yes votes are Mark, Martin Graham, Sheen Kim, Mark Watson, Lisa Allen, Jackie Sprouse, Adira Martinez, and myself. The motion carries. Our next item is to approve recommendations regarding student representatives to the Board of Directors for the 2021 school year. And as I mentioned earlier in our work session, we talked about our interview committee and the selection of the students. And you'll see the names there listed. So I'm looking for a motion. I move that the Board of Directors approve the interview team's recommendation that the following students be appointed on June 23rd, 2020, to serve as student representatives to the Board of Directors during the 2020 through 2021 school year. Maya Smith from Century High School, Ilum Akamola from Liberty High School, and Devlin Nell from Liberty High School Member-at-Large.
Second.
Okay, so it has been moved by Jackie and seconded by Adira. Is there any discussion? We'll have Andrew as a comment.
I just wanted to say that all three of the recommended students were on our sort of Q and A, our Google Meet. And I think these three are going to do really awesome things next year.
Thank you, Andrew. Uh, Sheen, you had a comment?
I do. I just wanted to add, for those of you who read Devlin Krill's, what you call, application, he actually attended HOA for about five years that we learned through the, through the interview process. And so I know that we had been looking for an HOA candidate, and we didn't have any applications, but I think that Devlin will be an excellent member at large because he has both experience from HOA as well as part-time HOA in Liberty, and right now he is full-time at Liberty, but I think he will bring some critical perspective as a member at large.
Thank you, Sheen. There's also a comment from Lisa Allen. Thank you to the committee for taking the time to interview. Okay, Mark, did you have a question?
Yeah, not so much related to this, but sort of more generally, have we figured out how we're going to do the mentorship for students next year? I know we discussed changes in the sort of format, maybe just having two instead of three, and maybe two at a time or something like that. So have we, did we settle on what we were going to do and how we would manage the outreach during lockdown?
Can we, can we do our vote before we answer that question? I'll have Mike that since that's part of our process. But if anybody has any other questions regarding this current vote, not yet, Jackie? Okay, I'm seeing your head shake now. So let's vote for first for the appointment. So if you will signal by saying I or yes in our chats, please. Voting yes is Martin Granham, Sheen Kim, Mark Watson, Jackie Sprouse, Adira Martinez, Lisa Allen, and myself. The motion carries. Okay, now moving on, before we move on to our next agenda item, if we can just talk a little bit about that mentorship, Mike, and then afterwards, Jackie, if you want to make your follow-up question.
Yeah, so, so last time we talked about this a couple of months ago, the, my, my memory is telling me that the view of the board was to reduce the number of mentors so that it was not rotating as quickly. And I'm so happy to pursue that. We, we really haven't sketched anything out yet, so happy to, happy to do that. Would people be interested in more of a semester basis? Would that, does that sound about right? That'd be 18 weeks, and we would, we could also add a couple different, we could add a couple board members to serve as mentors at the same time. Rose, do you have additional thoughts on this? Yeah.
Yeah, we did, we did talk about this, and I think that we did outline, and I am looking for it now, and we'll send it in just a moment to the board site. We did decide on semesters, or we talked about semesters, and so yeah, first and second semester, and I think it'll work a lot better that way.
We also have a comment just from Andrew.
I mean, I was gonna say, it might be also nice to throw in, to maybe have like two per sort of rotation than having two rotations. So basically, three overall rotations, two members per rotation. So then the six board members, the seven would get to mentor each student rep.
I've been throwing in, I didn't really have a question. It's more of a comment on this. I do like the two mentors at a time. I think that that gives a different perspective from both mentors. I do, I know we talked about having the student reps sit with their mentors at the work sessions. I think that would be helpful for any questions or comments. And Erica and Sheen and I had talked about having this current student reps kind of do a mentorship of the new student reps, maybe for, Erica, you want to chime in on that? I can't remember exactly what we said.
Yeah, it was more like an onboarding of the new student reps to kind of guide them through the process. I think and you all, student reps can correct me if I'm wrong, but that beginning time of you being on the board and when do you speak and how do you speak and your responsibility, like a little bit more of that onboarding, kind of like you did the Zoom call, but now with the ones that actually have been selected so they can ask more detailed questions. I'm seeing head shakes. Yes, that sounds like a good idea. Okay.
How about, how about Rose and I take the comments from last session as well as this new information with the onboarding and the reminder that they sit with their mentor during work sessions, and, and we draft out a little grid that would illustrate the mentoring rotation. Is that acceptable to everybody?
Yeah, I think you got a lot of head nods. That sounds good.
Perfect.
All right. Thank you, everyone, for that discussion. Our next item on our agenda is to approve the amended calendar 2021 with Connor Williams.
Good evening again. So in the work session, we discussed approving the amended calendar to return our calendar to 191-day contract and to delay at this time because of our current economic conditions, the instructional planning days that we had adopted previously. So I would like to request that the Board So I would like to uh request that the board approve the amended calendar for twenty 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 one.
I move that the Board of Directors approve the amended twenty 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 one calendar.
Second. Okay, so it has been moved by Yadira and seconded by Jackie. Is there any discussion? Okay, seeing no discussion, please signal by typing I or yes in the chat. I'm just waiting for Mark, but I believe his little square looks like it's frozen. It does look frozen. Yeah, okay, let me just. Well. Thank you. Yeah, so he's left. He's probably just restarting and bumping in it. We'll just give him a minute to make sure that we capture it. Rose, I did. It's Jackie. Mark just texted me, yes. I don't know if you need to see it there, but it's right there. His internet at home just died, so I don't think he may, I don't know if he'll be joining us. Okay, well, we will read all of our guesses. Martin Granham, Yadira Martinez, Sheen Kim, Jackie Spross, Lisa Allen, Mark Watson via text, and myself. So the motion carries. Thank you. Thank you for all your patience as we navigate our technology. Here's Mark back again. Okay, our next item on the agenda is reports and discussions with Michelle Morrison.
Thank you. Uh, as usual, I put together a narrative uh just about what's going on in the business office at this time. And I'm just gonna take a moment because we're not running behind on the agenda to just say how impressed I am with the business office staff and their ability to be flexible and work through this and still maintain all of our business uh functions that are happening in a secure way. We've had two payrolls now that have run fully um remotely. Um, banking transactions, um, kind of working through with other departments to figure out how to manage things like COVID nineteen leave and other issues, employee ergonomics, while they're trying to adjust to a new work environment. I just have a phenomenal staff, so I'm shouting out right here. I'm also happy to answer any questions you might have about the financial report. I feel like I can spend some time with you tonight because we're, like I said, not running behind, and this is all good work. I'm excited to talk about it. So happy to answer any questions you might have. Anybody?
I think everybody's probably saying kudos to you, Michelle, and the office, the business office, for making sure everyone's still getting paid. That's always like one of the 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 biggest things that we want to make sure it's on time and accurate. And um, we are thankful for our business, our office continuing to run really efficiently and effectively. And you see all those comments um from the chat, Martin.
I do. I do. Thank you guys very much. I'll pass those on for sure.
And I'll read them for the record. Lisa said, thank you, Michelle, and team. Martin says, your team is awesome, Michelle.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're gonna move on to our next item in the agenda, item H, which is in- information administrative regulation updates.
So just a reminder on ARs, these are not something that need to be voted on by the board. These are just informational only. And you can see that there are a number of them here that uh that we needed to share with you. Uh, we do need to share them on a regular basis. They just don't need to be voted on. Um, and so wanted to um get these in front of you. And um, if there are any questions, then the person whose name is next to it, you can either address that to them at this time, or you can um get in touch with them later if you've got questions.
I would just like to add that I'm really appreciative of the process that we have implemented of assigning a name to the policy. It makes it so much easier to ask directly the staff member um on behalf of the board if we have any questions. Thank you for that change on that um from the past. We've been doing it for a while, but I just wanted to acknowledge that that's just made it a whole lot easier. If there are any changes, any questions, feel free, like Mike said, to follow up with those um staff members. Our next item on the agenda is HCU and HEA reports. Do we have Jill Golea online?
I saw her earlier.
Yeah, so did I. Do we have HCU?
Yeah, I just saw Jill.
Yep.
Sorry, uh, who was our HEA rep again?
I see Melody in there. I did see Melody in the list. Yeah.
I think, I think Jill, there's Jill.
There we go.
I'm having to navigate. Let's see if I can get my camera to work. Hey, here I am. Okay.
Hi, Jill.
Hi, everybody. Nice to see everyone. Um, okay, this is my first time here doing this this way. Uh, I wanted to say thank you for recognizing the Teacher Appreciation Week and Nurses Week. It was nice to hear um in the proclamation that Erica shared about constant, teachers constantly learning and the countless hours that they put in. And I also wanted to say thank you for recognizing just the Mental Health Awareness Month and also the Asian Pacific American Awareness Month. I just want to share just a minute or two um kind of what it's been like, you know, to be an Oregon teacher this past month. Um, so if you just bear with me. Um, on March twelfth, teachers found out there would be no school um the following week, and that was um a Thursday. So the next day, March thirteenth, they grabbed their stuff, said goodbye to their kids. And the governor said it was considered an extended spring break, and they were asked to take their personal belongings with them. March thirtieth, um, they came back trying to navigate supplemental learning and had had the opportunity to have their peers do some canned lessons for them. And so they were learning to navigate the new normal and knew that they had to have everything rolled out by April first. They were asked to call all their parents, which definitely took one day. Um, and then on the second day, they were asked to learn Google Classroom, set it up and use it, understand Screencastify and post lesson plans so they could be ready to go by April first. On March thirty first, prior to April first, the next day, ODE announced possible year closure and plans to move um from um what we were doing currently. On April first, teachers posted their supplemental lessons, and um they discovered that a lot of families or students, especially the younger ones, were struggling to use the technology and access Google Classroom. So teachers also became the IT expert. On April sixth, teachers were required to have lessons posted, um, their own lessons that were unique to their classroom. And on April eighth, ODE announced school closures for the rest of the school year and that Oregon would be moving to um online learning. And then teachers were waiting for the ODE clarification around what that would look like. On April ninth, teachers received the HSD Online Learning Supplemental Packet. And that was on a Thursday, and they had to be ready to go per ODE by April thirteenth. And they were required to get everything up and running, and that meant ELA, um, math, and then strongly encouraged with ELD and content that was strongly recommended. And then this week, April twenty fourth, Guidelines Around Grading K through twelve came out. And today, you know, I just, I was earlier when you guys were doing your work session, I had the opportunity um as an OEA member to participate in a virtual meeting with Colt Gill, so I took advantage of that with fellow leaders across the state. And he was sharing just some of the the significant budget cuts that we possibly could have in the next biennium. So, you know, teachers, um, when I go back to thinking about what Erica said at the beginning about constantly learning um and putting in the countless hours, um, you know, Oregon teachers have truly done that. It has really been kind of like just the ground moving from underneath us this past six weeks. And I I just want to say thank you for giving me the opportunity just to share a little bit about what it's been like. And um, you know, teachers are navigating this, but definitely um my heart goes out to them, especially with um everything they've had to navigate and their new normal. You know, May eighth, Red for Ed a year ago, it kind of feels like a dream to me. I woke up thinking about that this morning and I hope this is the dream and I I will wake up from this. But um anyways, I just wanted to share a little bit about what teachers have been going through. And I know you guys know that, but I just wanted to put it into words. So thank you.
Thank you, Jill. I think it's also just important, and when we have these times, that our community um understands that. And uh, one thing we've also advocated is for just parents and community members to remain flexible and just give grace as we're like learning this process and trying our best to figure it out, provide support and um build those resources that we didn't know we needed right now. So uh, thank you so much for sharing that and painting that picture for our community. Uh, Martin Granham also says, thank you for sharing that, Jill. So do we have Melody?
Yeah, I'm here.
Awesome. Thanks, Melody.
Um, so my camera's not working, so I'm sorry. Um, I just want to say that I understand, I am, you know, I want to acknowledge how hard the teachers are working. Um, they have a whole new way of trying to educate the kids and it's, you know, like, they've had lesson plans developed and then they have to change them on the fly. So my hats are off to them and the hours that they put in. Um, the classified employees um are they have a unique situation in this um whole distant learning because many of them are not doing the same kind of work that they did while we were in the traditional learning environments. We have bus drivers that are delivering lunches instead of students. Um, we have SEAs that are delivering and EAs that are delivering packets to kids um instead of sitting with the kids. And face to face, they're now sitting computers. So the classified, you know, they're trying to get the hours. They've been instructed to get their their full contract hours, and they're trying to do that. But it's really difficult to sit at a computer for sometimes up to seven and a half hours to get their PD and get their hours in. But the classified employees are willing to continue to roll up their sleeves and get the job done. Um, and many are willing to take on new tasks. And they've even had to adjust their tasks while they're doing them or on the fly, you know, because it's not working, so let's try it this way. And then they're told, nope, we're gonna try it this way. And they're all like, okay. I haven't heard anybody say they keep changing things on me. Um, so they're trying. They're still there. They're still fighting. They're still um trying to help the kids. They are telling me, I am hearing, that what gets them through this is seeing the kids in the small groups that they do, that the smiles on the faces of the kids and some of the kids telling them that this is their constant in the day, that they're they're at home, they don't know what's going on, but they know that they can count on their teachers, their classifieds, um, their assistants. They know they can count on those people. Um, and sometimes it's just to show off their pet, and sometimes it's just to tell a silly story about their trip to the backyard. But it's what makes their day. So we're still here, we're still doing it, but um yeah, that's that's about it. Um, you were talking earlier about the um collaboration time, or somebody was about collaboration time um with the new budget cuts or potential budget cuts, I'm sorry. Um, I would just like to say that the collaboration time, as little as is being offered between the teachers and the classified, is very important. It's really important for the classified to know what is expected of them. So if there's any way that there could be a district message to the schools about what that should look like and not leave it up to individual schools, because individual schools, when they have that flexibility, they do it, you know, forty different ways for forty different schools. Um, but I would like to see the collaboration time continue or to still be there between the licensed and the classified because it's very important for us. So, sorry, I probably went over. So.
Oh, no, you're fine.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, I'm done.
Thank you, Melody. I, we have a comment here from um Mark Watson saying, thanks for all, to all of our classified staff for being flexible and helping where they can. I also think it's important to recognize that, like you were mentioning, in many of these instances where we're having to do uh distance learning, our classified staff is actually still the district's physical presence in our community when they're delivering meals or when they're actually showing up at the door delivering packages, and that's still our district presence in our community. So we're really thankful for that, that they're continue to be on the front line.
Thank you for that comment. That means a lot to us.
Okay, we are um moving on to our discussion time, and we will start with our student representatives time. And I see we have Maria. Do you want to start first, and then we'll go to Andrew? Maria's just unmuting her mic. I can see her. No, it's not working. Okay, well, we'll go to Andrew first, and then if you figure it out, come back. Or feel free to also type something in the chat if you want to add a comment. And actually, is Andrew still on?
Uh, yeah, I got my internet back.
Oh, there you go. Okay.
Um, so uh, first off, I wanted to also thank our classified staff um as well as our healthcare and essential workers, because they are really what is making our community go, keep moving. And um, it's nice being able to go to bed at night, knowing, each night, knowing that we still have people who are putting themselves out on the front line to make sure that um everything is still working properly um in our community. So thank you. Um, I remember our last meeting, I brought up the um projects that we were doing with Community Care, which is um the group with the Schnitzer Care Foundation that helps students in philanthropy. Um, they match ten dollars for every dollar we raise up to fifteen hundred. Our grand total was sixteen thousand, seven hundred and seventy-eight dollars and sixty-two cents. Um, and uh, Committee of the Student Government decided to use those funds to help out local groups assisting veterans. Um, so they have allocated twenty-five hundred dollars each to the Do Good Project, the Returning Veterans Project, and the um and Rebuilding Together. Um, and then eight thousand, two hundred and seventy-eight dollars and sixty-two cents um has, uh, will be going to Pause Assisting Veterans, which is a um, I think like a service dog um group that helps uh veterans who need service dogs and animals access them. Um, and then um one thousand dollars will be reserved for in-school grants that we'll be able to use to use next year. Um, so this Friday, or rather, this Thursday and Friday, we have um the election for next year's Associated Student Body Executive Council. Um, some members of the current ASB and myself have gone to interview candidates today and will also be interviewing tomorrow. Um, and we have fourteen candidates running for nine different positions. So um, the elections are always exciting. We have elections for ASB and for class cabinets, and it'll be exciting to see um who gets voted on and also how the candidates use social media when campaigning. Um, that's pretty much what's been going on at Glencoe. Um, I know construction has continued at um an extremely rapid Um, that's pretty much what's been going on at Glencoe. Um, I know construction has continued at, um, an extremely rapid pace due to the closures. Um, and I'm excited to see the final results. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. That's definitely a, one positive thing we have to look forward to when the fall comes. Uh, Maria, I see that you're muted off, so do you want to, um, share anything?
Yes, um, shout out to Lisa. It worked. Um, okay, so I always have to say like half of what Andrew says. So, um, uh, my school right now, um, a lot of the, my senior project was to register people to vote, or students, to register students to vote. And so, um, now that the registration deadline is coming up or came up, um, that was, that was something that I had been doing. And something very exciting or like was very sad, well, it was exciting and sad, was that, um, our Hill High staff made a video for the class of twenty twenty, which I know that the district posted on YouTube and it's super cute. Um, thank you guys for posting it. And, um, other than that, I guess like the seniors have their little like bond, they're all over, bonding over sadness, but, um, we're coping. Uh, other than that, um, yeah, I applaud the, the staff of the HSD and on top, like what Andrew said, um, the healthcare workers and, or all essential workers, to be honest, but, um, yeah, that's about it.
Thank you, Maria. Um, superintendent's time. Mike, did you want to share?
Yeah, just a couple of things. Um, first of all, is it just me or do board members have a little secret race going of who could type in their vote in the chat soonest? Is that, is that just me that's imagining that or is that something that's really happening? Can't tell for sure. Congratulations on the board policies and yes, Val and Rose and, uh, cabinet members, just all of the, uh, all of the work that it took to get that done and, and just the, uh, the concept and the vision behind the, behind that that was, um, provided by the board members. Glad to have that, glad to have that done. Um, Andrew mentioned the construction over at Glencoe. Had the opportunity to do a tour of Glencoe last week and really excited about all of the changes there. And, um, I just hadn't, hadn't seen it in three or four weeks and just all the changes in that short time, just amazing what's, what's been accomplished there. And I think it's going to be a great thing for our students over there. Um, we'll be visiting Hill High a little later this week and seeing the changes that have occurred there as well. I appreciated Jill and Melody's comments, um, just the, the constant state of change that we've been in really since the week before spring break. And, uh, the manner in which our entire delivery model has changed. It is, it's just incredible and, um, and just applaud the staff for helping to keep, um, keep, uh, instruction moving for our students, because that is, that has not been an easy task and I just, I just applaud their efforts. If we, and as we move into this new budget reality that we find ourselves in, we will continue in that constant state of change. Um, we'll, like I mentioned before, we will be running scenarios and doing some modeling and we'll be sharing that, um, at our first budget committee meeting. Um, if there's a positive to be found in all of this, it's, for me, it is the, it's the realization by our community and all of our partners of the extreme need that our students and our family members find themselves in and just the amount of struggling that's going on and, and their reaction to that, to step up and provide assistance in any way they can. That has just been a huge positive in, in all of this. So, I'd just like to thank our teachers, our classified staff, the, our partners who continue to step up. Um, appreciate them so much and, uh, we'll continue to chip away and make a difference for our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike, and a comment from Martin. Thank you for your leadership, Mike. I just wanted to put that out there for the record. Um, let's go to Board of Directors' time. And I'm gonna just go in, this time we get to go in order of where I see you on the screen versus where you're sitting, so you might not be the first one. So the first one I see is Mark, Mark up on the left.
Thank you, uh, and thanks to all of the, yes, staff and teachers and everybody sort of doing the best we can with all of this. I want to give a, a shout out to, uh, Jordan and his department. Technologically, I think, uh, you did a great job helping us, um, do our job in this crazy environment, so that this ran very smoothly and, and that, and that doesn't just happen automatically. So thank you guys for making that happen. Wanted to mention that, you know, events are still sort of taking place over the course of this. Uh, a lot of our, the rep, the representatives that, um, represent our school district are having various events. There was one tonight, uh, while we were doing this, so none of us could attend, but there's a, a student-centric one. The, um, three HSD interns in Representative Solomon's office will be having a student speak session on Thursday. Um, and they would, would love to have board members come. I, I don't think we're gonna be, we'll be speaking much, mostly be just listening, but you know, it'd be great if, if anybody wants to join us there or parents or anybody who wants to just hear what students have to say. And I'm very much looking forward to, so, it, Mike, do you think it's in a Friday update that we hear what the seniors say tomorrow? Sorry.
No, we can, no, I just had to get it off mute. Um, yeah, I can definitely do that for you. Um, we can just give you a rundown and, and then provide some kind of insight as to how the conversations went and kind of maybe which way we're leaning and what kind of recommendations we're going to make on a graduation. So, yeah, and I think we've got, like I was saying before, our goal is to have a decision made by the following Friday on what that's going to look like and then start communicating that the week after.
So I'm guessing we have some ideas on what we're thinking about. If it's gonna be a week from Friday that we decide, we must have some ideas we're thinking about. Um, I look forward to seeing what those are and what, hearing what the feedback our senior classes present from it and then, um, you hear from the student, from our student reps on Wednesday or on Thursday, and then hopefully, you know, we'll all hear from some student class on Thursday at the student speak session. So, thanks, everybody.
Will do.
Thank you, Mark, and a shout out in our chat from Jordan, uh, thanking Justin Devon and our interpreters tonight, Mariana, Maria and Gaspar. And for all of you, I don't know if you updated that, um, Mike about our translation of our board meetings?
No, please do. I, I, I forgot to do that during my time.
Yeah, if you can just tell them the logistics part.
Yeah, um, so we, we didn't have a translation during our first online meeting and so that is now provided. And, um, I'm, can't find Jordan and all the, there he is. Jordan, can you give us the specifics on how they, um, how someone that interested in interpretation would access that?
Yeah, so we, we basically created a separate, uh, number, a conference call number that, uh, anybody who needed, uh, translation services could call into. And the interpreters were on that line, able to, uh, listen to the live stream and provide the translation, uh, that was corresponding to the live.
Thank you, Jordan. Um, and just a follow-up, is that information, um, shared with either our Packer on our Facebook so that people know after our video, if it's saved on, is it recorded, translated and posted or just, uh, the live?
Um, it was just on the live. That's something we could look to try to do for next time to see if we can figure out how to record that, um, over the top.
I think that would be helpful, even if we have two separate videos that they can go back and watch, but it'll be the translator version. But thank you. All, we are all learning how to do this and making sure that we are providing our, um, Spanish speakers and our community, uh, the ability to participate and stay engaged even while we're in this virtual environment. So thank you for working through that. Um, our next board member that I see on my screen is Jackie.
Okay, um, I just want to say how proud I am to be HSD through this. Jill and Melody hit the nail on the head. Our classified and licensed staff are amazing. Talk about flexibility and thoughtfulness, just to make sure that the needs are met of our students. And, um, you know, a lot of us are working from home and, and I like to call it, we're now living at work instead of, um, working at work. And so I just really want to take a minute to encourage everybody to find that life-work balance. I know it's hard for me, um, you know, when you get up and you just walk across the hall to work. It's, it's a totally different beast. Um, I also want to thank Jordan and our technology department. I, I know how frustrating and difficult it can be when technology doesn't work. And so I appreciate everybody's flexibility and patience while we, we work through this and figure it out. And if you haven't seen the new video on HSD of what I like to call the Apple video with Mike and Olga and Aaron Carlson from HSF and Mayor Steve Callaway. It really does, I mean, I love it, first of all. And it really shows the strength of our relationship with other, um, partners in our community. And I just, I, I love it. I'm just, I am so proud to be on this board and work with this cabinet and work with all of the teachers and, and the, because the bus drivers who are dropping food off. I mean, I just, everybody's been so flexible and gracious and I appreciate it greatly. So, please stay safe and just be kind. That's all.
Thank you, Jackie. Um, Yadira?
Um, I just gotta echo what everyone is saying. Just thank you for, um, all the hard work that everyone's been putting in. I, um, I'm not, you guys all know that I work at, uh, Virginia Garcia and I'm actually right now uh, working at the mobile testing sites that we have, or I should say screening sites. And, um, so wanting, I think the talk of reopening has some, uh, people thinking that we're kind of over the worst of it, but Washington County still is not. The state as a whole does seem to be going in the right direction, but our county has not really gotten over that hump yet. So just, you know, continuation to, uh, um, social distancing measures, washing hands, only leaving the house if you need to. And then also just really highlighting that um, our, our, the community that we serve, um, the members that, um, I know that we see at Virginia Garcia, we, we have, um, higher testing positive rates for communities that are like, for example, uninsured immigrant farmworkers. So really making sure that we're checking in on our families, seeing what the need is and continuing that. I know everyone's, um, doing their part and, um, just continuing that into the summer is going to be, um, really important too. So I'm, you know, so glad to know that we're gonna be continuing food service through the summer, because I think it's, um, going to be very much needed. Um, the numbers of people in need that are utilizing food banks is going up. So, um, just, just remembering that our community is going to be struggling for a while and I'm just so proud of HSD and all the work that we're doing to help support, um, our families.
And we just want to give you a special shout out, because we're also proud of you. Not only are you an essential worker and work on the front lines doing that, but we're also hearing that you are now the president or the chair of the Board of Dentistry for the state of Oregon. So we want to,
I am.
Congratulations. So she's on two boards and works full-time and has kids in the district. So, just amazing. Thank you for giving us your time and being on our board too.
Thank you, everyone.
Uh, our next, and you got all these shout outs and kudos on our chat, um, from all your fellow board members as well. I just want to highlight that. Um, Sheen, you're up next. And then after Sheen is Lisa, so that you can get ready to control D on there.
You know, I, for me, I just wanted to reiterate how much I enjoyed being a part of the interview process for choosing the student reps. I, I think for every single one of them, I wish I could have like an hour of their time and uh, just chat with them and, and pick their brains more. I just loved how thoughtful they were and how creative they were in some of the solutions that they were presenting and the things that they've already been a part of at their schools. Um, so I just, I love that HSD has student reps. Um, and we have had them for the last, you know, three or four years, I believe. Um, and so I just, I love that we continue to do this. And I think that, you know, continuing to center students in all of our conversations is so critical and vital in, in guiding the work that we do. Um, and so, you know, the next big thing with graduation, I'm, I'm super excited, Mike, that you are going to be speaking with the students. And I look forward to what types of ideas and needs and wants, uh, that they have, you know, especially since this is, um, this is the, the largest event of their life. Um, I know that I've read some articles and stuff where people are trying to minimize how the significance of, you know, graduation and the lifespan of things, but we can all say that, looking back, um, in, in the span of our life, thinking, oh yeah, graduation was, you know, just a fraction of what we've lived through. But when you think about for our seniors, this is something that they lived their whole life for. And so just, I think for us to remember the, the importance of that and to be sensitive to uh, the grief and, um, just the sorrow that's, you know, surrounding that for our seniors, I think is important. Um, so I'm, I'm really excited that we're, um, we're including our, our seniors in the decision of how we choose to celebrate and honor them. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheen.
Okay, uh, my turn, right? I am muted. Okay, it works. Jackie's a genius. Okay, uh, so I just, I guess I'll just echo what everyone else has to say, which is I'm also super proud to be HSD, you know, the, the level, um, of commitment that the staff has shown to make this work. When, um, I mean, if we had talked a year ago about, oh, what if we have to close in March for the entire rest of the school year and do everything like, it wasn't, we couldn't have fathomed the possibility. And so everyone just sort of jumping right, um, from the starting line to make it work is pretty incredible. And I think that, um, it certainly is not perfect, but we've, we've, we've made it work as best as we, as we could and we're learning as we go. So, um, so I'm definitely really proud of that and all of our, our staff for being incredibly flexible. And Jackie is right. Um, we are living at work and I know that our teachers are feeling that, um, and our, our classified staff for feeling that. Mike and I were just having our check-in earlier and I was sharing how that, anecdotally, that's been true um, in, in my home as well. Um, just the ability to walk right into work and, and not really leave work either. Um, so thank you to everyone for all that commitment. And then I'll just say, you know, um, you guys are incredible and I miss you so much. Getting to see your faces on here, um, every couple of weeks is, is nice, but it's a little different than actually seeing you in three D. Um, and I, I appreciate all the time and commitment that you are putting, um, into your board work. I've, I've definitely had to step back my own commitment a little bit these last several months with um, going back to work and going back to school and, and working on that piece of my life. But, um, I know that, um, the things that I don't have time to do anymore, you guys are, are all doing and I don't, I don't have to. And I don't normally feel like that in areas of my life where, oh, it'll be fine if you don't do it. And you all make me feel that way. So, um, and that's not just for the board, obviously. Um, the cabinet, nobody, you guys have it under control too, but just, I love this team and I, and I appreciate being a part of it. So, thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. And just to, um, speak some of the comments that we have, um, Jackie mentioned, said same thoughts and Martin is echoing the positive comments of Mike and all my board colleagues. Nothing further to add, uh, from Martin. So we will, um, does that mean you don't have any discussion time? Okay, so, um, for me, I just had a couple of things. I wanted to, uh, as the weather is nicer and people start walking around, I see so many people in our neighborhoods and kids and families. And the other day I walked over to Henry and just walked around behind, there's a park that connects, many of our schools connect back to, back to a park. And it was nice to see people doing the social distancing, but still being able to be out in our grounds and being respectful of our rules and not utilizing playgrounds and, um, just going on walks. And I just want to, um, thank our facilities, KC and also our community members for just making sure that they are abiding by our rules and, um, being, uh, making sure that that stays open and available to our community. I also, um, just wanted to say that on April twenty-second was Administrative Professional Day and we are so thankful to have some amazing administrators that support the board. Uh, Rose Roman, who's on here, has been so awesome. You're getting all these claps on here. Um, and just helping us and coordinating us through, uh, this virtual world that we're living in. And we just want to say that we're so thankful to have her and Kathy just being amazing and communicating with us. Um, also just a, a shout out to our communications team. We're just maintaining that stream of information to our community. We know like things were so hectic in the beginning and changing constantly. And now just maintaining information flowing, but also that like sense of community, like that video coming out that just helps people right now, especially in this like grieving and distancing that we're doing to still maintain that closeness, um, in our communities that we miss so dearly. Um, so thank you and shout out to that communications team. Also, I think that exemplifies just that Apple video and, in many ways, when we're able to collaborate with other agencies and other community partners, we can maximize the impact that we have on our community. And we're able to see that even just today with Lisa Tattersall from And we're able to see that, even just today with Lisa Tattersall from the uh Washington County Libraries and mentioning that program and having that, that communication and that there's a possibility of a partnership for us to maximize the impact that we're having on our community. So proud to be HSD. Thank you for uh continuing to do that. I also just want to shout out to all of my board members, because as you can see from the different uh comments that we have, it's just amazing that we have such a different perspective on our, from our regular lives and the point of view that we're able to bring in from having board members that are teachers, that are subbing, having board members that are in the business community, in the, in the government section, in our city section, in our county, and in our health system. It just provides such a different um variation of opinions and perspectives that we desperately need right now to ensure that we're serving our community in the best way. So I just want to echo what we've been saying and we are so thankful that we have this team to work with as well as our, our staff and our cabinet members. And I just want to thank all of you for um all your hard work, flexibility, and um just maintaining that positive attitude of working together. So we thank you all for that. Um, I think that is all that I had for me. So I want to thank you all for joining us today for our live stream in our community. And um we'll continue to work and make sure that we can deliver our services the best way that we can. So, thank you all. This board meeting is adjourned.
Thanks, everybody.